Good evening, welcome to the North Idaho College June 26 Board of Trustees Meeting. Would you all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have a quorum tonight, all board members are present. I wonder if trustee Murray, if you would read our mission statement.
I'd be happy to. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities. It serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. Board, have you all had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if there are no changes, we'll accept the minutes as written. All right, we'll accept them, thank you. No one has signed up for public comment. I expect it's going to be a short meeting tonight, school's out for summer. So, we will move right into, I'm going to ask Dr. Burns to do the introduction for celebrating success with the Workforce Training Center.
Chair Wood, members of the board, it certainly is my pleasure to be able to introduce celebrating success to this evening because I think it is truly one of our remarkable successes. And it tells the story of when you get the right people in the right positions and you provide them really quality leadership, what can happen, the good things that can happen. And you already sort of had a preview to some of the success as we were going through our budgeting processes and learned that the Workforce Training Center is helping from a financial aspect, our general fund here at North Idaho College. But that's just a part of the success that is going on at workforce training. So, it's a pleasure to introduce these ladies tonight to talk to you. I think though, also, I need to mention, and why I wanted to get up to mention this, in some ways, this is a little bit of a swan song for both of them. This will be their second to the last day of work, I think, close to it, in that Cassie is officially retiring from North Idaho College, although we talked her into staying for just a few more weeks after her retirement to help us out through a transition period. And Patty Shea, who has been an interim for us, will also be departing at the end of this month. And they have just both done such remarkable things, Cassie over the years, from when she started coming in with our aerospace program and kind of transitioned kind of to the catch-all person. We gave her a number of different roles here while she was at the college and certainly is exiting as the Dean of Career and Technical Education, Workforce Training, Outreach Centers, Dual Credit, and anyway, have been incredibly appreciative of the work that she has done here and thankful to Patty for the interim work that she's done. So with that, I'm going to let them speak.
Thank you.
Should we applaud now or wait? That sounded good already.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I didn't bring any tissues, maybe I should have. Good evening, Madam Chair, trustee members, Dr. McLennan, my fellow friends and vice presidents and everybody out there, this is my last, yeah, I might get emotional over this. This is coming, I first wanted to just thank the college for giving me this opportunity. It's been great, it's been the best team in my life and so proud to work for this community. So, just gonna go right there, I'm gonna get way crazy.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm here to talk about the Workforce Training Center and, let's see, how do you want to do that? Maybe, how do we?
Alt+.
Is this clicking?
Alt+.
Alt+. Can you come do the alt+?
Alt+.
Alt+. We might be challenged.
Nope.
Alt+ to advocate. Do you have to hold it?
Although you could give that presentation too.
Here, that one. Ah, there we are, okay. All right, now we can get along here. So, yes, thank you so much for trusting in me to represent this college in so many different ways to our community, to our students. And a special thank you to my dear best friend, I call her my sister, for coming onboard six months ago, actually a year ago, to help out the center with some relationship building, to come in as an interim to just do some coaching and healing for the center and help get us on the right track. She's an amazing friend and she's done amazing work over there, so I want to make sure she knows how much I love her. Okay, so what we wanted to show you were where we were in 2016. We had kind of a dysfunctional reporting structure. What it was is that all the employees directly reported to the director out there, there were no hierarchy, there were no accountability, expectations, clear performance indicators put in front. So, we took a look and said, okay, how do we know we're doing well if we don't have any key performance indicators there? I mean, what's our enrollment and how many people re-enroll and how many classes do we drop because we haven't planned incorrectly, we haven't planned correctly for any of this? We had some ineffective relationships with main campus, we worked in isolation, and we just kind of existed out there and everybody did not look at themselves as a bigger picture of NIC and as a bigger picture of the strategic goal and as our mission. So, we knew that we had to create some buy-in and some ownership out there and create a real team. So, we worked on some coaching and some team leadership and a lot of retreat and activities. And we took a real hard look at the human capital we have. There are approximately 16 full-time people, I'm gonna get to a slide about that, maybe 10 part-time people, that handle over 6,000 students. That is a huge load for a small team. And they were overburdened and overworked and everybody was doing a little bit of everybody else's work. Nobody had a clear delineation of what their role was out there and how they could contribute to the greater good. We also looked at the physical space, and if you get the opportunity to go out there, we built some more offices, we're making it more student-centric, but that was a huge thing too, people were on top of each other. And nobody knew about us, and we're still kind of hearing that, but we're getting a little better at it. We didn't have any direct marketing, we had, and nothing against the college marketing, but what I mean is each coordinator was kind of making their own flyers, they were just trying to get their own word out on an independent way. So, in spring of 17, we started to facilitate some big change out there. We were coaching leaders, we have coordinators now, we have teams underneath coordinators. We started creating buy-in and trust. And if you ever look at really good change models, leadership chain models, the key element to all that big change is trust. If you don't have trust, you feel sabotaged. So, when we had trust, we were able to inspire and motivate and we brought ownership for the entire center together and the team started working together and helping one each other out. And they trusted the direction of the leadership and where we wanted to go and they could see those goals. We brought in a fixer of the hard stuff, the tough stuff is what we called Patty. She's pretty good at just bringing out the elephant in the room and having those conversations. And so I'm gonna let her talk a little bit about that. And we worked really hard under leaders' guidance to work on the relationship with the college. You've got the Workforce Training Center working very well with the Parker Center now and the faculty out there, they're working with the business professions, with Dean Doyle's health professions. Everybody's looking at themselves as being part of the bigger picture and that is starting to create a really nice one-college feel. We also set some goals. We looked at an organization called LEARN that specializes in non-credit workforce training models and especially for community colleges. And we did a program review, we wanted to see if we were on the right track. Program review came back, president's cabinet took a look at it, they endorsed where we wanted to go. And so we started to realign everything. We realigned workloads, we realigned an organizational chart where we had units, we have a health professions unit, we have a customized training unit, we have a community ed unit. We have leaders of all these units that directly look at their key performance indicators and decide how they're going to improve, whether or not they have a budget with their own margins to hire on more assistants, and just redefined all the processes so people weren't overlapping on workload. So, a really nice lean model, if you know much about the lean manufacturing model, and the LEARN model definitely reinforced where we were going with the center. So I thought it would be kind of cool to look at some key performance indicators. So, in 2017, or FY17, we had 204,000 contact hours, 18, 218, and this year about 200, 112. Like, wow, that's way down. However, our cancellation rate is far less than it was for the rest of them. It's almost half of what it was in 2017. So, we're making better decisions about what to offer and make sure that the cost involved turn around and fulfill the expenses with the revenue that we received. And the number of classes have significantly gone up over the years, but again, a little less than last year, but we're doing a better job with the classes that we choose to offer and we're filling them. The other thing that I thought was interesting is, so this is some of the KPIs we put in, we put in a quality score where we have people basically on a chart, on a survey score, whether or not they liked the class and they take it again. And so, out of 73 classes in one particular period, 70 got an above-average rating of four of above. In 17 and 18, we didn't even have those in place and people were dropping out of the classes all the time. So now, we had a better idea of why they liked it, why they didn't like it, and whether or not we'd repeat it. So, we were just being more effective with our decision-making. We started rethinking, we hired a marketing coordinator, we redesigned the space like I talked about, we have effective workstations and collaboration with others definitely increased. So, where are we right now? We consider ourselves very responsive, we are working with some major employers in town. Can I talk about that? I don't know if that's secret or not, which, if we get a customized training contract then, could probably bring in half of our revenue. So those are the kind of conversations we're involved in, and we feel that we're ready to step up to the plate and have those big conversations because we're dedicated to our process and we know what we're doing, our expectations are very clear. We have diversified, so we don't focus on one thing, we might make sure that we always have a diversity of options in each unit, so if one is starting to not perform as well, we can lean on the other one. So, diversifying was a really big decision as well. Our Safety Fest, oh, I was gonna, that's your, oh, I'm gonna let Patty talk right now. I forgot, I'm just chatting right along. So, Safety Fest, we had record numbers this year. So, 1443 represents the number of individuals, yeah, that participated in our free Safety Fest. These are people that had a positive experience at our Workforce Training Center on behalf of their employers and went back and has said good things about us. 73, yeah, were the number of classes, 60, yeah, were the number of instructors that volunteered their time. And then 13 major partners came in for this event for a couple days. This is how we're starting to market and get ourselves out there just a little bit. We've done Safety Fest over the years, but on a very small scale. This year was a very big scale. And I'm gonna go ahead and let Patty talk about the team now, 'cause this is where she's done a lot of good work.
First of all, it's been just an honor to do this. I've grown so much as a leader, they train me every day and they're making me better every day, so at some point, I'm gonna be really good. One of the things that we, when we talk about being responsive, one of the things that we really look at is, I instituted this, how might we? So whenever anybody has an idea or business comes to us, it's like, well, how might we do that? Instead of, oh, this is gonna be hard, or we've got all these constraints, it's like, no. And business is asking lots of diverse things of us, and I really feel, as I said before, is we need to respond to those needs and figure out a way to do it because somebody else will and we won't be there and we want to be there to serve. So, it's pretty cool. The other thing I want to say is, it's all about the team. The team, you know, serving others is a team sport, and without the team and the wonderful job that they did, we wouldn't have any of this. They are so dedicated to our students and to the communities and to our businesses, it's unreal, they would do anything. And we have a cowbell that we use, so when students come up and they've passed a test or something, we ring the cowbell and they get so excited because we're excited for them. So, it's very personalized out there. So, I want to show you a couple of pictures on Safety Fest. Just, again, this is one of our forklift and material handling courses that we offered. Again, there's 73. I am gonna leave with you this list, this is the 73, what we got for scores, what we offer, fabulous, absolutely fabulous. And again, these partnerships, it's another way for business and us to connect. And we're doing this for free, this is all for free. People come in, they don't pay a thing, they get all this training, they think NIC is fabulous for that. The other thing is, a lot of the business partners that we work with were our prior students. So they're looking at ways to give back to the community. The next one's a little gory, but it's made up. So, we try to make things as real as possible, this is called Stop the Bleed with Kootenay Health. And we actually had part of this on our Facebook page the day it was going and everyone, oh my god, you can't show that, because it looks so bad. It was like, we just made this up so it makes it real and so that you're trying to respond to things that are real. So that's another one that we did. I'll let you talk, oh, I guess I can talk. The apprenticeships, Rick and Lita came out on a Saturday morning to spend some time with us, trying to find a place in the parking lot because we have so many students. So here's some of our enrollments. Over the past three years, that's 1,236 apprentices. And as you know, as you've talked in the community, we need those people out in the community and we're serving that need for business. With that group, we serve 89, a partner with 89 Idaho employers, so 89 of them. And we go across the border and we're serving 18 Washington employers. So they're sending them here and they like sending them here, they're very appreciative of it. This is just kind of a cool story, the gentleman in the middle, this is his two sons, and he came to us, he graduated, the father graduated from the plumbing program in 2008 and started his own business. And these are his two sons, they started in our plumbing program as teenagers and they graduated with their apprenticeship just this last year, so that's pretty cool. And I'll let Cassie. Oh, oh, okay. We have a lady that came through WEOW, and you're familiar with WEOW, it's the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And so, this lady, a single mom with a son, described herself as very timid, and I want to tell you what else she said when she started with us, this was her quote. She said, "I don't even think I can ever get a job at a facility like a Kootenay Health or similar, and I'll probably always just be a home health aide." And so, a lot of times, people come and we're their first stop of trying to get back into the workforce. So before NIC, she was making $10 an hour. At NIC, in little over a year, she got those three certifications. And she started with one and then she got her confidence built up and she said, "I can maybe do another one." And you have a program coordinator who works directly with her that says, "How do we serve you? Your need is specific to you, how do we get you where you need to go?" So now, she's employed as a certified nursing assistant at $15 an hour and she's thrilled. And she really wanted to come here tonight and just couldn't make it through her schedule. I'll let you go with numbers.
So, we wanted to just show you some more impressive numbers of where we were in FY16 all the way to now. And Chris might not agree with our math that we did this, but we set a budget for ourselves of how much we'd like to bring in, in other words, the number of courses that we're going to charge in the training, we were trying to shoot for in FY16, 1.6 million. We were a little ambitious because we were just starting to feel a little better and we didn't quite hit it, so we were able to look at a margin of about $89,000. And I don't want the community that's watching this to think that we're making profit, we need to reinvest in ourselves buying, you know, semi-trucks and things like that in order to grow and to continue to serve and to replace things. So, $89,000 wasn't quite cutting it. FY17, we were about 39. And remember, I said, spring of 17 is when things started to turn around, so you could see what happened in 18. And right now, we don't have all the numbers in and we're guestimating about 320 to 350. And interesting, less students again, but it's important to know that we're more effective with our decision around that. So now that we have a model that's working, we're looking to take that model and just continue to grow it and do some really great things. So, oh, there you are, okay. So, we're just, we're just super proud. I am absolutely proud of this team, I'm proud of this college, I'm proud of the community that we serve. It takes, you know, it takes all of us to come together to be more cohesive and service-focused and do everything. They are a highly effective team, like I said, with 16 full-time people, the amount of work that they do. We might have 100 part-time instructors out there, but that's a lot of, that's a lot of things and courses and people to manage with a small team, and yet they continue to grow and believe in themselves. And, you know, to serve 7,500 students, that's quite an achievement. They are, and I would like to thank Patty again personally, and, you know, we all love Patty, everybody loves Patty because Patty is a ray of sunshine. But she really came and helped them realize the tough conversations and started to bring out the best of everyone, so the interpersonal skills that they've gained from her coaching and mentoring the last six months are invaluable. And now, this team is just ready to take on anything. They're looking forward to the next, to the next director and they believe that they are just at the tip of the surface right now. If you talk to each of them, they're like, oh, we're just ready to go, we're just ready for the next great big thing. So, they're poised, they're excited, we expect exponential growth out of them because they're all lined up in the right spot.
Yes. I'd like to do just a quick thank you. First of all, I really want to thank Rick. Rick really allows me to be candid and he never chases me out of the office and you always listen, and I really appreciate that and you really truly listen. And Lita, you listen with me always with an open mind but an open heart, and I think that's important, the open heart part, so thank you for that. And to tell you, the reason the center is successful is because of Cassie's vision, her mission of how she did it, her leadership skills, and also her management skills. And as you know, sometimes those are a little different. You wouldn't be in this position right now if it hadn't been for her looking at saying, where should we be, how should this look different? So that's a credit to her. I thank her for her leadership and also for inspiring all of us that work for her because she inspires us to be the best that we can be and serve the students in the best way we can. So, I just really want to thank you guys very much for this opportunity and we're always here to help. And this team across here, Laura and Graydon, and my friend on the end, Mr. Chris, who, when I come in and say, "How about this idea?", he's, "Go for it, go for it." So, anyway, thank you guys very much. And we'll answer any questions.
Well, thank you, it's a wonderful presentation. Board, questions? We'll have lots of them, we'll start down at the end with Brad.
First of all, congratulations, it's great to see the enthusiasm. I wonder how anybody could say no to either of you? You know, I had an office out there back, started in 1999, and I have a soft spot for that place out there, but that customized training was going on back then, it needs to be resurgence of sorts or it just seems that's the mission of that, other than the non-credit classes and that. But is that what we're gonna see, is a resurgence of customized training?
Yes, so, one of the things, by working with, so credit, so working with Parker, working with Doug Anderson, who's our biggest cheerleader, so we come together and here's what business is asking of us. Business says, they look at the curriculum and they look at the, for credit, and they go, ooh, okay, industrial mill, right. I want that course and that course, I don't want English, I want that course and that course, welding, I want that. And so they're picking and choosing, they said, we just want the smattering of all those. And we don't, right now, we don't know if we really care if it's credit or not, maybe we'd like it to articulate into credit. So, they want us to put all that together with some other things and then deliver all that to them. So we're being really creative, saying, how much of this can your own people train? How much of this, in other words, we'll train the trainer onsite, because this is a big site that we're talking about, big company, how much can we do for you, our pieces? So I think we're trying to be, again, meeting the customer need that they're asking for. So, we're super excited, the one that we're working at right now, it'll be huge.
It's about Pulse Falls, too.
Oh, yeah, so, the city of Pulse Falls, we're working with them, they would like to partner with the other cities, so they're looking at some training that we're offering in terms of customer service that pertains to municipality. They go, we can't give them a bonus if something goes wrong or, you know what I mean? It's like, how do you, and I could relate to that being from the utility, so it's like, they wanted the customized training to really say, customer service for us. When someone's really angry and we send them to the city council, probably not the best way to do it. So, we just are piloting some programs with that, they went off fabulous, and so they would like to see maybe just continuing training in a number of different areas and then partner with the other cities to see how they can bring them in. So that's fabulous. So we're getting there.
Thank you.
Very good. Joe?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, Dr. Silva, you and I have known each other for quite a long time over at Spokane Community College and also here at NIC. And you have always been a superstar in terms of getting things done. And so I just want to recognize all of your efforts, I want to thank you for everything you've done for NIC and we wish you the very best in your retirement.
Thank you, thank you.
And then for Ms. Shea, you and I have known each other for a long time over at the community colleges, Spokane, and then through Avista and here. And you also have been a spark plug in getting things done and been very active in the communities in which you've lived and served. You've served on numerous boards from community colleges to the workforce development organizations. And so, I want to thank you for everything you've done and the both of you for revitalizing the Workforce Training Center. And Patty, we wish you the very best from your retirement at Avista and thank you for your interim service at the Workforce Training Center.
Absolutely. Ken?
Patty, you've retired before, now you're trying to retire again.
You call it transition now, I don't.
Oh, do they? Well, Cassie, I know you're on the road to retirement one day, but retirement's only in your dreams. Both of you, your impressive skills, you know, will always bring you back to us and bring you back to other challenges. I mean, look what happened to him.
Good point.
I too want to thank both of you for the efforts that you've put in and we know from being around for a while that the Workforce Training Center was a great big challenge, huge challenge. And you had done such a marvelous job of turning that into a very, very prideful part of NIC. And I want to thank you, thank both of you very much, and I do expect to see you back here. You said this was gonna be your last speech, I doubt it. I'm looking forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, trustee. Well, they've all said it very well. It is such a great presentation, but then you couple it with the fact that you two are retiring, that's hard to compute both because we'd love to keep you. But as Ken said, you know, once you're part of the NIC family, you really don't leave. You'll be back in some form or another, we'll call you and say, we need you on a committee. So, we're super excited for your future, but we're also so excited for what you've done for our future. So, thank you, ladies. Rick, did you have a comment?
Just that, I appreciate all the comments of the board. You know, it's funny because both of these two were somewhat instrumental in my being here at all in that when I came to interview for the position, Cassie was the one who rode me around and took me through the still structure of Parker, trying to help me understand the vision of what was happening there. And we had some pretty significant time together to learn about each other and what our goals were and what, you know, we had to offer. And Patty was actually on the committee that helped bring me in and I think some of my hearing loss is in large part, teasing. There was one moment where it got really loud and it was Patty, but more importantly, more importantly than that was the way that Patty and Cassie both had welcomed me into this community and made my transition to the presidency at North Idaho College and the level of work and ethic and the ability to get things done, total and complete confidence in both of them and together as a team, they're unstoppable. And I, we're all saying goodbye, but I'm, I mean, I'm not, so they'll be back in some capacity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and good luck to both of you. Yeah, please.
We do think that this is mainly, so thank you.
Oh, Todd didn't, we're good. He'd already been talking through it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us right to the president's report, Dr. McLennan.
I'll make this very short. Last, well, I've already said thank you to these two fine ladies who are leaving, so I'll just go on to the next item. And that's the, last week, as the board knows, we had the state board, perhaps, I'm not sure how this is gonna go, but it may be the last time for some time that the state board actually holds one of their regular meetings on the campus of a community college. We didn't quite get a definitive answer on that, I'm not sure where that's gonna go, but the discussion was out there and so we may have been the last one again for some time. Having said that, the visit, the structure, the support that the college put for the meeting was exceptional, as you all would expect, the grounds were in top shape, the IT support, all the support that makes a meeting like that go, went literally flawless. But what was really unique about this particular But what was really unique about this particular meeting is that it, there was a meeting before the meeting with the North Idaho College administrative team and the state board executive staff. And it was really an open-ended agenda at the beginning to just have a conversation between our two administrative teams to talk about issues that we have in common and how we can support each other and that sort of thing. We, and Lita stepped out, but I'll just mention that through the, through Lita and others on the executive team here, put together a very well-structured presentation and conversation to take the state board with some depth through some of the transformational work that NIC has been engaged in to support statewide goals around completion. Notably, our Pathways Project, the Cardinal Learning Commons work that you've had presented to you, the Cardinal Central one-stop student services, service that just opened this a few months ago, and NIC Connects, the intentional, purposeful advising work that we're doing. And I couldn't have been more pleased or proud of all of our folks who gave those presentations because when you put it all together, much like the board workshop or retreat earlier this year, you start to see the movement at North Idaho College with some truly best practices work. And those aren't my words. Those are the words of the visitors who engaged in those conversations with us, to the extent that we heard from many of them after the presentation, that what we really need to do is bring the other colleges and universities to North Idaho College and have them see the kind of transformational work that's happening up here. Can't have better praise than that, and it's well-deserved. And Lita, thank you and your staff and everybody, Grayden, for the leadership in making those things happen. But it was a very, very good and effective meeting. I had an opportunity then to make a presentation to the state board, and we took a different approach this time. Rather than going through a lot of metrics and all that, we told stories and told stories about our students, and it was a lot of fun to do. One of those stories was around the Metallica Scholars Program. That's that $100,000 grant that we got, one of 10 in the country. Got picked up on an Idaho Public Radio Twitter feed. That Twitter feed got picked up by Idaho Education News, yes. And then that got picked up, it's probably going to get picked up nationally because now it's on the All Within My Hands Foundation website, their front page. And they wrote a really nice article, not so much, it was about Metallica and the scholarship, but what it was really about was the challenge we have in communicating to our community the value of these other programs that are also college and some of the great efforts that are going on there. So overall, it was a very positive state board meeting, and that concludes my report.
Great, great report. Questions for the president? Okay. That takes us on to our murder health and science building expansion update. Joe Dunlap?
The committee did not meet over this last period of time, but I think Chris has a report out on the schematics that have been received. And so, Chris, I'll defer to you.
Thank you, Chair Wood and trustee Dunlap. We've had our first schematic design meeting just to meet with the end users to make sure that we've got everything captured that needs to be in the building, and that we're working on the adjacencies of where those things would be. So we've had an initial meeting with the architect. We have one more schematic design meeting this month, actually. And then throughout the end of the summer, we've put in together an initial schematic design for us to share with the committee and then make a plan to bring to the board to make sure that we've captured everything we need in the project.
Great. Questions, board? Great. Thank you for the update. Under Old Business, tab one, our second reading and action on revised policy 2.0104. Jessica Adams.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and guests, I am here for the action item, second reading, for the proposed revisions to policy 2.0104 in relation to the initiation and revision of policies and procedures. And I think I've given a lot of information over the past about 10 months. I am here to stand for any questions.
Board, you've had, you've seen this a couple of times now. Anything further, questions? Trustee Howard?
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm being so technical about this, but I, as I read through this the second time here, under Policies and Procedures, which is on the backside of the first page, it says, "The adoption, deletion, or revisions of policies and procedures affecting the internal administration of the Board of Trustees and its relationship with the Office of President." And I would prefer it if it said and/or. And is an inclusive term, just it sounds like we have to have. It has to also relate to the relationship with the president, but it could be either or. So that would be my request with regard to that. And then, as I read through the additional language that has been added at the end, the second sentence down says, "As such, a standing committee will facilitate review of all institutional policies and procedures with their authors. On a staggered and regular basis, upon completion of any revisions, the committee will ensure the policy owner submits their recommendations to the president and the college." And I'm not sure who a policy owner is and how that differs from an author and how that differs from a standing committee. And this policy doesn't explain any of that. It's, it sounds like there are different entities that occupy the status of policy owner and author, although it may be that they're the same entity. So it's just the wording, I still find it awkward.
Chair Wood, trustee Howard. So, yes, that's something that we had discussed at the last meeting of updating. Owner and author were kind of being used as the same, but switching it makes complete sense on having to ensure the policy author. Because per the top of policies, it kind of says policy originator or author, and so that's what it's kind of referring to, is always ensuring that the policy author is submitting it through the proper channels.
Sure.
Yes.
So, and I apologize if that didn't, we picked that up in the procedural conversation that we have. I don't, it obviously did not translate into the policy. What I think Jessica's referring to is if you turn to the front of the policy template, there's a section there, policy originator or author. That, that, that language, policy owner should say, policy originator or author.
Okay.
That's, that's what that's intended to be, not owner. So that's a...
Well, could we make those changes?
Yes.
I mean, I, there's no immediacy to this, I don't think. We could maybe take it up at the last meeting. It's purely technical.
No. And I think since we've had this conversation on the procedural piece of this, I don't think there's any challenge for the board to modify the language here and work through this at this time.
Trustee Banducci?
Actually, I have a couple of things in addition to what Ken has mentioned. One's a small correction. On page two of three, down under Policies/Procedures, number one, in the last sentence, to be consistent, it should be to those members via the college senate, and the C in college should be capitalized. We've capitalized that everywhere else in the document that I can note, including number two below it and number three below it. The other item I have is more of a philosophical issue, and this actually goes to, Ken took it in a slightly different direction, but I'm back to the very end where it talked about the authors, "On a staggered and regular basis." One of my complaints, I guess, as a trustee in my seventh year, is there's two things that I don't know that we do on a staggered and regular basis. One is service contracts where they're posted, and we can know on a regular basis when they're going to be renewed, every two years, every three years, so that vendors can be aware of it and be prepared, and we have open bidding. In the same vein, as we do our policies and procedures, I think we need to have it very structured as to when the regular time is that those are reviewed. It was interesting listening in the workshop about somebody saying, what did we say, 11, 12, 20, 22, 27, however many years some of those have been. So if we're going to say that, staggered and regular, then I want to see a disciplined, structured process to that where it's spelled out and everything is noted and those timelines are laid out and they're followed according to how we lay them out. So, so both through the policies and procedures, that needs to be that way, and I'm going to throw my plug in again for all the service contracts, because those ought to be too, and those should be under the policies and procedures of service contracts. It should list that where everything's on its particular basis. I don't want to ever have somebody say, "Well, it's been a million years, and we had the same auditor, and now we just felt like it was time to change." That's a terrible answer.
Trustee Banducci? Can we, we can take that up at another? If we could focus on this, Ken, I'm trying to follow where you were.
Chair Wood, could I just speak to a part of? So Chair Wood, trustee Banducci, so that review, this review committee that we're discussing in that last paragraph, that last section, that is something that was a part of this ad hoc committee that college senate put together, and that's what the standing committee would do. In the procedure, it will outline a seven-year review schedule for those policies. That doesn't mean that a policy can't be reviewed outside of the structure. That just means that they're all going to be reviewed every seven years.
So at a minimum?
At a minimum, and that's all spelled out in the procedure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Howard, can you tell me again where the and/or was? What section was that? I'm trying to...
It doesn't say and now, it just says or.
The college senate, oh, you want it to say and?
And slash or.
Oh, okay.
It's under Policies and Procedures.
On the second page.
Right.
Is he it?
Yeah, got it.
I just wanted to put and slash or in there.
Okay, okay. So those, with those corrections, I think we can make a motion to approve this policy. Do I have a motion?
Well, do you want to make a motion now, or do you want to let them correct it and bring it back in August?
I think it's a minor.
It is minor.
So I think we can go ahead tonight.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved with the changes that have been discussed.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, the committee, for all the hard work on this policy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good summer. All right, that takes us to tab two, our second reading, action, 2019-20 board meeting schedule. Dr. McLennan?
Yes. You have the background information in your packet. In accordance with Idaho Code, section 67-2340 through 67-2345, the Board of Trustees is required to adopt an annual meeting schedule for its regular meetings. The schedule shown in Attachment A is proposed to establish the board's annual meeting schedule for the coming year. As in the past, no board meeting is planned for July. Meetings are scheduled for the fourth Wednesday of each month, except as noted on the attachment. Any retreats and workshops will be announced as needed.
Okay, thank you. Board, you have the calendar. Any questions on the calendar?
I would like to...
Trustee Howard?
I think we ought to send a letter to the State Board of Education and ask them to change their calendar.
To what?
So it doesn't conflict with ours.
Oh, the K-12?
No, the State Board of Education. This is a joke.
Okay, I'm, I'm with you now. Trustee Banducci?
This may not be necessary, but I noticed that if we change from the regular fourth Wednesday of the month, that we made an annotation as to why and what the exception was due to. Minor point, but in November, we'd probably want to say there was an exception due to Thanksgiving if we're noting that, because that is not the fourth Wednesday either.
Okay. I think that you're right. These kind of evolve and change, but it's a good, good window into where we should be. All right, do I have a motion to approve the Board of Trustees?
So moved.
Meeting schedule. I have a motion by trustee Murray. Do I have a second?
That was trustee Dunlap.
Oh, it was?
But I'll second.
They're interchangeable, they look alike.
I was impersonating trustee.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries. Thank you. New Business, tab three, approval of the president's contract. And we have Mark Lyons here, so Mark's going to chat.
Thank you, Chair Wood, members of the board. This is the time where the Board of Trustees considers for approval a new contract for the college president. Consistent with past practice, the president's contract is reviewed annually and consideration given to a contract renewal for an additional year. President's current contract is for three years. The proposed annual renewal would be for fiscal years, July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. The board may also consider compensation change or other terms. So at this point, the board has asked to consider a motion to approve a renewed contract through June 30, 2022, with changes to compensation as agreed by the board. And in addition, we'd ask for a motion to authorize the board chair to execute a new contract on behalf of the board and North Idaho College.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Trustees, do I have a motion to approve the president's contract?
I'd move to approve a renewed contract.
Motion, a second?
Okay, now, before we get there, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me ask for an amendment of the motion because it was a motion to renew the contract with a 2.5% increase in base salary and authorize the board chair to execute the contract on behalf of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, all right. So with that amended, that amended motion, I have a second from trustee Howard. No?
I, procedurally, if trustee Dunlap would withdraw his motion, there was no second to that.
I didn't make that motion.
See, yours is better.
I would, I would...
This one was Murray's.
This is a problem. We're going to have bigger signs here.
They have to, they can sit together.
I'll grow a mustache. I would withdraw my motion.
All right, so trustee Howard has made a motion, the correct motion. Do I have a second?
Since I made the incorrect motion, I would second that.
Any further discussion? I'd like to take an opportunity before we vote on the president's contract to express to the president that we're very pleased with your work here, very pleased that you want to continue to work here. It's a big job, takes a lot of leadership skills, and you certainly have those. You have complete confidence of the board, and we're happy that you're going to continue to stick around.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Is that what happens when you go up there instead of here, it's all chaos?
All right. The next item on the agenda, we really don't have a name next to this. Well, Dr. McLennan, sort of. Options for gymnasium funding and design.
Yeah, so despite your last praise, I really don't have anything organized around this. I was asked to put this agenda item, so my name is truly just a placeholder to get it on the, on the agenda. I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Wood.
I'm going to turn it over to trustee Howard, who asked for this to be on the agenda.
I did. Last year, we waited until the last minute to address the legislature with regard to potential funding source. And I think that the, as I recall the report on that attempt, part of the reason we were turned down was we didn't have a plan. We didn't have it specifically identified. I know we have authorized a study now to explore where a gymnasium might best be placed on campus, and that would include an evaluation of the Christiansen Gymnasium. My, my reason for asking it on this agenda is that we won't meet again until August, and I am fearful, quite frankly, that if we were to want to make an approach to the legislature again this year for the kind of funding mechanism that we approached last year, that we would again be unprepared if we didn't start immediately working on preparing that. And that means getting it before a committee in the legislature that we hope is friendly to our proposal and having the information available that they might need in order to address this issue. As I understand, last year, I went through the Senate State Affairs Committee without objection, and it only met objection in the House State Affairs Committee and based upon some basic objections with regard to our, the completeness of the information we had. So I wanted to take this opportunity to put it on the agenda, to talk about getting prepared to approach the legislature again this year with regard to that funding mechanism. And maybe I can ask Chris to give us an update on what's going, because we had authorized that study with regard to other alternatives on campus and maybe the status of that, and maybe any comments he might have with regard to the approach to the legislature. maybe any comments he might have with regard to the approach to the legislature, if that's appropriate.
Certainly. Dr. McLennan?
I just wanted to clarify, on the part of the administration's work in taking this issue to the legislature last year, we did, it did come about rather quickly. I would, however, for the record, say that the work that was done to prepare for that legislative request was done as well structured as anything we could have done if we'd have started working on that two months, three months prior. The, what we ran into, as you said, trustee...
Howard.
We, it went without issue through the Senate Affairs Committee, State Affairs Committee. When it got to the legislature, the issues had nothing to do with our organization. It had more to do, really, with philosophical or beliefs about how we should be approaching the project, notably taking the project out to a vote to the entire Kootenay voter base. And there was a real difficulty for the, for some members of the committee to understand the tool, both the tool that we were asking to be used, as the Senate clearly understood, and then the application of that tool to our particular situation. Where I think some more preparation would have been helpful would have been in the actual definition of the project itself, in terms of, there was a lot of conversation about the cap of a $25 million request in a project that may have been as low as $15 million, and some concern over, well, if I recall, somebody saying, well, you know, when you come back and have it right-sized, you know, we'll take another look at it. We weren't prepared, again, no amount of preparation would have gotten us to that, given the stage we were in the development of our thinking around the project in the first place. So having said that, we did learn some things through that experience, and one of those is that we may not, one possible choice, should we want to go down a similar road in the future, is, A, we would be prepared to do that, and we would ask for board authorization to do that, but there are other avenues that we may be equally attractive, or even more attractive, both practically and politically, to consider. We did not have an opportunity to go fully into that in our last, the last time we talked about funding in our Capitol workshop conversation, but I think Chris is prepared to talk a little bit about that now, and also to answer your question about the status of the Christianson Gymnasium review. So thank you.
Let me just make a comment. If, if anything I said was critical of the administration on the last go-around, I did not intend it to be. It was short notice, and it was an opportunity to get before whatever committee we could get it before, and it happened to be a privileged committee. And so I'm just, the reason for my motion tonight, or my wanting to put it on the agenda tonight, is I don't want to get there again. I want as much lead time as we can, if we're going to go down that road. So I'm happy to listen to alternatives, or what our status is.
Thank you, and certainly my response wasn't in terms of, I just wanted to make sure that the, kind of what we experienced there was really something beyond our control. And one of those things that we may want, we will need to consider going forward, is that committee structure, even the appropriate committee structure for us to, if we choose to go through the legislative approval route, is that the way to go? So these are things that we're considering.
Chair Wood, trustee Howard, I appreciate the question. To start with, just an update on where we are with the Christianson Gymnasium study, is I have not completed the RFP. It is almost finished to go out to local architectural firms to see what their interest is, and looking at Christianson, what its capabilities are, to meet our needs long-term. So we're almost there, but it hasn't been released as of today. And so that's the update on the RFP for the Christianson development piece.
But as a result of that, we probably won't have anything back, even if we got the RFP assigned until October, November.
I would think it would be fall, absolutely.
Well, one of the, I think, the philosophical issues is going to continue to be our biggest hurdle, and one of those committee members suggested that we just sell our entire campus and move. You know, how do you, how do you have a conversation about real things when someone has that vision? Joe?
Yeah, it seems that because of the timeline last year, we were forced into a position to go before a privileged committee. And the hope would be that we could get it to a committee this year that is more friendly and would be more receptive with members of our congressional delegation, if you will. And my concern is that if we're not getting the report back for the Christianson Gym until, let's say, October, then we're into November, and the legislative session is started. And then again, we are behind the timeline, and my concern is that we're going to be forced into another situation where we have to go before a privileged committee if we decide to go forward. And so then that puts us back yet another year in this whole process. And so I guess I would be interested in how we can do things concurrently, or chew gum and walk at the same time, in that we have the study going on for Christianson, and yet we prepare what we think we might need for the legislative request, and that be flexible enough where we can adjust as we get closer to that time. I just don't want to, if possible, miss that timeline again.
Don't we already have that information from Tieders Group? We know. We have a pretty good estimate.
Well, we had an estimate, a rough estimate, and I think Rick was fully aware of that, and took that information with him at the last committee meeting. And so I think we need to be a little more refined in terms of what we want this thing to look like, or what we think it might look like, so that we have the opportunity to go before a legislative committee early on this year.
And you had also, somebody mentioned that there might be alternatives, so going to the legislative, can we hear all that, so we can?
Yeah. Just one more thing, I think that's exactly what we need to do, so that we, if we have one or two or three possible futures, that we keep all of those possible futures being developed at the same time, and I want you to hear about the third one from Chris, so...
Okay.
So Chair Wood and trustee Dunlop, I appreciate that, and I think one thing that we all need to remember is, the RS is essentially written and ready to go. And we had one committee member who wanted a fully baked plan, but typically what comes forward with ISBA is, we're going to hire an architect for this assumed project. It's not typically fully baked when ISBA gets involved, that's their role. And so our intent would be, if the board wants us to go forward with ISBA this year, we would get on this early and would not be subject to the privileged committee rule. It was the timing this year that stuck us in privileged committee. That was not our optimal choice from the beginning. The next piece, and trustee Howard, you talked about this, is while we were working with ISBA, we immediately started working as well with other options. And so we can issue certificates of participation for this project, and that was something that the board considered as a financing structure early on in the development of the CTE facility. And because of our bond rating, and some of the other favorable things that we have going for us currently, with the set aside, that would pay certificates of participation, it's highly likely we could get a better rate going to the market, as opposed to going through ISBA, because of some of the specific things that NIC brings to the table that are unusual. And so we are looking at other options, and would love to, if it's the board's will, bring some of those advisors in, and let's talk about what that COP process would look like for us, and what kind of ratings we could possibly garner, but it gives us much more flexibility outside of the rules, even of ISBA, which was a favorable option. So we've been talking to those advisors and are looking for other options outside of that.
Dr. McLennan?
Just want to say that that third, now third option, we're somewhat more favorably positioned in that we were turned down through the legislative process formally during the last session. So should we choose not to go the legislative route and go this other route, from a process in how we've gone about this, we've certainly done our due diligence in trying to do it one way versus another.
I'm clear with what this third option is.
So during the development of the CTE project, Holly Troxel came in and gave a presentation to the board about what a certificate of participation would look like. And essentially, it functions much the same way the ISBA would, where a trust company would put the money up and sell certificates of participation to individual investors, or institutional investors. And they would have the opportunity to, just like we planned with ISBA, they would hold the facility in trust over a predetermined period of time, essentially, if you will, leasing it back to us, or until we've paid the full amount for the building, and it would revert back to the college, in the exact same setup as the ISBA model.
It kind of looks like we sold bonds.
It's very similar.
I mean, and right now, you've got an inverted yield curve, you've got the 30-year, it's less than the 10-year, so we're in an optimum interest rate environment, if we want to go out longer, with doing it in such a way that we don't have an earlier penalty if we do pay it off earlier, if we need to clear it, or as we've done with some others. So you extend the maturity out, so you can keep the principal down, but the interest rate's still going to be low, so you're not going to have an interest rate issue there. Buy some time, and then you can always pay it off early, if you, you know, work something out.
Yeah, my one concern, maybe you can answer this, would be, are we going to, will we qualify for the COP? I mean, there are statutory restrictions on how we can go out and earn money, or get money, and we explored whether or not this is a...
Trustee Wood and trustee Howard, the auditorium district in Boise has already done this, and has fought the legal battle, and it has been proven legal in the state of Idaho. That did not, that happened after our conversation about CTE. So there were hesitation with us when the CTE project came, is this legal, will we be able to do this? But there's been other projects in the state that have already used this model.
Community colleges?
Municipal or other political subdivisions.
Great. Trustee Dunlop?
Regardless of which option we decide to use, I think we need to proceed with the planning, and then the decision on which option will come along. But I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that if we missed, if we decided to go on with the legislative option, we've got a looming deadline out there, and I don't want to get pushed back another year again. And so I think looking at these financial options, or financing options, is good, and I still want to keep that momentum going, though, with the project.
Well, I would just like to remind the board that, I thought the purpose of discussion tonight was just talk about financing options, but there's been no decisions to move forward on the facility. There's been no decisions on how large it would be, how much we would spend, and so I guess we can't get too far ahead of that. We need to bring the board back together, we need to discuss what it is we think we want to spend, do we want to do anything at all, and what it would look like.
Chair Wood, wouldn't we still even need to hear, after we get the RF, find out about Christianson?
Yes.
Chair Wood?
Go ahead.
I guess just by way of suggestion, I am comfortable, I think we would be doing this work anyway, to start mapping out the pathways for funding, especially in anticipation that there is a possibility that we don't have to do any one of these things, but certainly knowing the timing, we learned a lot about the timing last year in terms of what that meant for us. I just think it would be incumbent on us to have these conversations internally, and be ready to answer them, or bring them back to the board when we have some very structured information about what these pathways look like.
Trustee Howard?
I think my concern is, and I think that's Joe's concern too, is that no matter which vehicle that we decide to go with, whether it's the ISBA, a COP, or vote approval, it's going to require, what are we asking for? And how big is it going to be, and some of the fundamentals that we need to put together, I don't care which package it is. And that seems like it's a preliminary step. It's not a full-blown design, it's a preliminary step that says this is what we're going to do, and this is a price range, and all that stuff. And I don't know why we can't get to the point of that step, being, getting prepared for a presentation, whether it's to ISBA, or the COP, or even to the voters, now. Why can't we start moving in that direction now?
Well, we can, but we really need to have a board workshop, so the board can discuss, do we even want to do this? Do we want to build a gymnasium? Do we think we need it? What about Christianson? And so that's first. And if you want to do something in late July, or first part of August, we could hold a board workshop and kind of nail that down. Go ahead.
And trustee Wood and trustee Howard, duly noted, we've got to get the design work done on the Christianson Gymnasium, I think that's a key piece here, so that the board has that information on what we can and cannot do with Christianson. And I want to make sure I'm hearing, I think that's what you're asking, is let's get these other pieces in line so we can answer those questions.
But I don't want to wait till October to do it.
Right, and we can continue working on the financing piece in tandem with that, whether we're preparing a conversation with ISBA in the legislature, or also working with outside advisors we've worked with in the past, to say, what would a COP look like for NIC?
Well, and what's it going to cost to put together the presentation data that we're going to need, whether we go before the ISBA, or whatever? I mean, if you could come to the board with a cost estimate, so we can see where we're going to authorize that preparation at some point in time in the near future, I mean, I'd like to see something in August where we're going to start moving ahead. Otherwise, we're going to get into November again, and won't know what we're doing.
Chair Wood and chair, excuse me, trustee Howard, one question, I guess, at that point is, I would, I'm under the assumption we have that information to move forward now. Basically, in the last RS, we were going forward asking for up to $25 million. And that is how we're rolling this out forward, both from the COP standpoint, and from the conversation with legislature going forward. We don't have details around what that may be, but it was an up to $25 million. And so that's the framework that we've been operating under.
If you think that's appropriate and enough for us to proceed with exploring these different financing operations.
But that's really not the end of the conversation. The board really needs to set a time to discuss, even though we're exploring all of our options and want the financing in case we want to build, we still need to decide if that's something we actually want to do.
I agree with that. I just don't want to keep pushing it off till October or November, that's all.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Information items, planning update, Diana Rents. Yes, please do.
Thank you. As Diana's walking up, I'll just do again another very brief introduction. There has been a lot of progress made over the evolving planning work, and what I've asked Diana to do is to bring the board up to speed in terms of how that alignment is going. As you know, we're, one of the things that has been a decision, and is important, is we have an existing approved strategic plan, and we have this developing work that has all the cultivate components to it. Those cultivate components have been working themselves out through the work of the academic master plan, the facilities master plan, and the other things that you're aware of. So we are trying to align our planning cycle to the seven-year accreditation cycle. So you're going to see a line of, I guess, sort of a line of demarcation, or a line of launch, but that line of launch really doesn't speak to the work that has been going on up to this point, to walk out the principles and the goals that came out of the cultivate work. So with that, I just want to also say that this is another one of those things that's just had a ton of institutional engagement and involvement, and that it's actively walking out. So Diana, I'm going to turn it over to you to walk us through this.
Thank you, Dr. McLennan. So the line of demarcation that Dr. McLennan just referred to, that this plan will become officially active in the 1920 academic year, and so at the sunsetting of our year seven accreditation cycle, so we have taken a little bit of, you know, liberty with our naming convention here, and called this our Vision 2020, carrying us into the 20s as NIC moves forward. called this our Vision 2020, carrying us into the 20s as NIC moves forward. I apologize for some technical difficulties.
Please say it was control tab.
Okay. All right. Slide number two magically appeared. I don't know what I did, but I'll figure it out again next time. So very briefly, if you recall, we did have about this time a board workshop last summer. We talked quite extensively about the cultivate work and about how that informed the strategic plan effort and the master plans. Progress is being made, as Dr. McLennan mentioned. Many initiatives and efforts within those master plans are already underway. I'm thinking of the one-stop shop Cardinal Central, as well as many other initiatives that are taking place. Graydon or Lita could tell me more, but we'll move forward. Integrated Strategic Plan will become official in 1920 and that is aligned with accreditation cycles. So why integrated planning? There's a word choice that we're using here. We're not just calling it strategic planning, we're calling it integrated. Planning is crucial to a well-conceived future. We need to have an idea of what we're doing and where we're going. This effort of an integrated strategic plan that umbrellas all of these others aligns master planning, budgetary planning, and unit planning. This allows all institutional units to work in the same direction. We've got a lot of wonderful things happening on this campus, as many organizations do. Oftentimes, we need a centralized direction that we're all heading. This integrated planning work has been carefully tended this past year by our integrated strategic planning team. It's a variety of NIC staff, NIC faculty, and NIC students who serve on this team. I have two of those guests with me here tonight and they'll be speaking with you in a few moments about the planning work. We also maintain a cultivate advisory team. This is the small subcommittee of the original cultivate planning team that helped us bridge the gap between the cultivate work and our integrated strategic plan. And these folks still are on call and invited to all of our planning meetings and do participate when they are able. So in recent years, then, moving from the cultivate team, let's call that Phase One, they gathered input and feedback from students, employees, and the community. We were reminded in the workshop earlier today that one of our NWCCU recommendations from 2013 was to ensure that our planning had institutional input from, and not even institutional just here on campus, but community input, input from stakeholders. And so that cultivate effort really captured that piece of that recommendation. Phase Two, the cultivate subcommittee, which I actually just showed you a picture of those folks, they analyzed information gathered through cultivate and established our themes and objectives. Phase Three, our implementation teams identified strategies to accomplish objectives and aligning master plan initiatives with strategies. We're kind of in between Phase Three and Phase Four at this moment, but moving into Phase Four, we'll be refining our team a bit. There are some folks who are ready to move on to other adventures. There are some folks who have asked to join the planning work and so we'll call that our Vision 2020 Steering Committee. And it will be the responsibility of that group to really track the progress of all those master plan initiatives and other efforts happening on campus, make sure that they're on track with the timelines that have been established. It's important when we think about our work to consider, why are we, why are we doing this? It is because we are relentlessly focused on the student experience. That's number one. We have established some key principles to guide our work. We need to support that student experience with a focus on teaching excellence. We need to ensure collaborative and data-informed decision-making. We need to provide effective and transparent planning communication. And we need to steward a values-driven and dynamic planning process. These are priorities for our planning team as they work. In our integrated strategic plan, we do have three large themes. These themes help us to ensure mission fulfillment. Theme number one, access, completion, and transfer. Theme number two, people, places, and processes, working on addressing all aspects of those things for students, for employees, for our community stakeholders. And theme number three, workforce and community engagement. I'm giving you just some examples here. I know that you did see all of these themes and objectives in our workshop last summer, but just some examples of these objectives as a refresher. Choosing the first objective from each of our themes, provide an integrated and aligned student experience, develop a culture of leadership, respect, and accountability, and be the connection among students, employers, and our community. So how do we walk that out? Well, all of those theme ones, all of those strategies are aligned with initiatives in our four master plans. So these, again, just an example of theme one strategies, one B and one C, ensure all students have knowledge of and access to all support services, and explore the variety of student-focused delivery methods. You can see that these two items, these two strategies in our integrated strategic plan are aligned with items, initiatives in the master plans. At this time, we've done a thorough investigation of our alignment between the academic master plan and the strategic enrollment management plan. Those are those codes that you might see in the alignment box there, the academic master plan, AMP. The strategic enrollment management, there is a retention plan and a recruitment plan. And so those two are laid out in this example. But I do want to note for you that the IT master plan and the facilities master plan will be aligned here very, very soon. We wanted the academic master plan and the strategic enrollment plan to prioritize their items first so that the IT and facilities plans could come in and support those efforts so that they knew what the priorities were and then where to funnel those resources. So this is a phased approach as we move forward. So the future of planning, if you recall, again, our workshop, Dr. Kurtz, our accreditation officer, set up well this conversation. So if you recall our NWCCU requirement again, or recommendation from 2013, another component of that was that it be a data-informed planning process. And so when we look at the future of planning, this is a significant difference here in Phase One, that we will have the ability in this next round to analyze the data collection to identify direction for further research. We will still gather input and feedback from our stakeholders as we did in the cultivate effort, but there will be a foundational data component that will help us to determine where are the places that we should go. Additionally, Phase Two, very similar to what we have been doing this last couple of years, and Phase Three as well, refresh and review those items. But in Phase Four, again, I would like to point out that we will be really identifying those measures to assess the effectiveness of those actions. And that's something that we'll be able to do more consistently and with greater ease as time moves forward. So our current status is supporting and growing the integrated strategic plan. You can see all of those items on the left of your screen, our academic master plan, our strategic enrollment management plan, those are working in concert with one another. The facilities master plan and the IT master plan are each supporting both of those in the layer above them. Budget planning, supporting all of those master plans. Our operational goals, in which each unit at the institution determines three to five goals for the next, for the coming year, those are also supporting all of those master plans. And our annual employee goals are going to become increasingly aligned with these efforts. All of these efforts are supporting and growing our integrated strategic plan. In the future, our integrated strategic plan will provide direction and priorities for all of the items now on the right. And so we have grown our strategic plan and it will return the favor to us in the future. Some planning team perspectives, I did ask for two of our team members to come and share with you a little bit about how the planning work has impacted their understanding of the institution and the future impact that they believe this planning work will have. So I'm eager for them to come take the stage and I'll step aside for a moment.
Chair Wood, trustees, and Dr. McLennan. My name is Tiffany Smith and I am a student here at NIC. I have been part of this integrated planning committee. I was, I had the honor to be a senator for the spring semester as next senator. Have been participating in, working with this to better NIC, to make it an overall great experience for all students. And I believe that this, bringing together all of these divisions and departments and having a definite direction and objective will enhance all student experience and continue to grow with NIC and NIC's projected outreaches. The future impact we'll have for future students, staff, faculty, is alignment and having that connection, collaborating, and direction to ensure that all students have success. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would like to tell you that I did this executing a half-pipe off a double black diamond at Switzer, but I won't say that. My name is Kathleen Miller-Green. I am one of your child development instructors here at NIC. I'll be starting my 14th year this fall. And in the time that I've been at NIC, I can tell you two things for sure. The first is that when, at a division meeting, the division chair says, "We are looking for volunteers to work on the integrated strategic planning committee," you find a lot of faculty suddenly finding their fingernails really interesting. And then the phrase, relentlessly pursuing student experience, then you raise your hand. And you saw the faces of the folks that are there, and I don't think any of them initially thought this was going to be a massively exciting experience. And sometimes it's really not. There's a lot of detail here, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of pieces that most of us knew nothing about before we volunteered to be part of this committee. The second thing I can tell you is that I love NIC. I will retire from this place in a long time. Having said that, I also have worked with students who have fallen through the gaps, who have had hurdles and brick walls and conflicting information and have left NIC. I think that that is not the majority experience of our students, but I don't want to see a single student have that experience when it doesn't have to happen. When I walked onto this committee, really not knowing what I was in for, what I discovered was a very interesting analogy. You've all heard the Chinese proverb of the five blind men trying to explain an elephant. So one person is describing the elephant because they have a hold of the trunk and one has a hold of the ear and the foot and the tail. So we'll switch that analogy and this will be a cardinal. So we have these units and one unit is describing a wing and one the beak and one the tail feathers and one the foot. And they're all doing a great job of describing their part of the cardinal. But our students need us to describe the entire cardinal. So when we look at that switch that Diana just showed you on the PowerPoint, where we're trying to take all of the information from all of those planning processes, which really have been done well, they're impressive documents. People have looked at their section of NIC with a microscope, feeding into an integrated plan and then moving out from there. What I see in that process is the opportunity for the academic master plan to coordinate or overlay the IT plan or the facilities plan. Where are their redundancies? Where are their gaps? Where are their opportunities where we can fulfill the goal of relentlessly increasing student experience here? Because if we're not really focused on that, what are we doing? I'm hoping that the ongoing process will help us be able to have plans, a plan, not five plans, but a plan that helps us to allocate resources in a better way, that feeds information into our accreditation processes in a robust and meaningful way, and helps us be able to explain the entire cardinal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both. I appreciate your time tonight and participation. Some final reminders, planning is an active and ongoing process. This results in a living document that will be refreshed and reviewed annually. The details will be modified, but the overall vision is mission fulfillment, as you saw in our three major themes. There are already many initiatives underway. My brain at this moment only remembered one, but I, you feel free to ask some others here. The academic master plan and strategic enrollment management plan are in progress. The IT master plan and the facilities master plan are in progress. And as Kathleen spoke to, moving all of this information, all these, what a great image, these different pieces of the cardinal into this single cardinal, it takes time, it takes patience. Kathleen's right, it hasn't always been fun. It's been hard, but we are doing it. Our goal is to have a integrated vision that everyone can get behind and be headed the same direction with the same single cardinal. Any questions for myself, my colleagues who are already thinking of examples, and our guests here tonight from the planning team?
Board, questions for Diana?
I just have a comment. You know, I have served on strategic planning committees and it can be, it can be very dry, but the best part is when it all comes together and you see it working and functioning the results. That's so exciting. I have never seen this kind of alignment. I've never seen an integrated strategic plan. And so I'm very excited about this. I'd love to get a copy of your PowerPoint. And you know, I have to give the president a lot of credit here. This was your vision. This was, we're going to find the right person, Diana, to lead these committees and align us in the way that we need to. And the end results are going to be tremendous. So for all of you that are sitting in those boring meetings wanting to put a fork in your eye, it's going to be so well worth it and I just much appreciated the hard work.
Thank you.
Dr. McLennan.
I just want to thank our two, your two assistants.
Yes.
You're two of my new best friends. Thank you for the energy and the commitment you've put into this. It's just special because, you know, that principle of relentless attention to the student experience is important to me, but it's not, it's not mine. It came out of the collective work, of all that cultivate work that got us there. It emerged as the number one principle of what we're about and what we need to keep in focus as we keep walking into the future. So I really appreciate you bringing that up. And while you're, I also want to commend Diana. Diana not only is filling a void and a need that we had around... Diana not only is filling a void and a need that we had around coordinating the leadership and the planning, around planning and all that, and is doing a great job, but there have been some really key infrastructure pieces that have been missing that are really important to this work, and, and it's, it's, it's not something that you can just put into place overnight, and, and the key to that is how we, how we access, the whole data journey that we're on right now. We haven't had the tools and the resources, we've had some tools and resources to look at this, but it's never been fully coordinated, and it's not always been directly placed at the, at the point of where it would do us be of some use to how we evaluate our programs and services and how we look at the work that we're going. So we've spent a little over a year now doing some incredible, incredibly meaningful work, and again, engaging a lot of training across campus, a lot of infrastructure to our ERP, our, the, the reporting tools that we use, and it's work that could not, did, would not have happened without Diana coming on board or this position being created. And the dividends that that's going to pay in the future to having this planning be aligned and in a way that we can actually see dashboards and, and, and regular evaluatory data to, to tell us how we're doing on these measures is that infrastructure's being created. And so I just want you to know that, that's not something that you would see, but it's really important fundamental foundational work to the, this whole process moving forward.
Exactly. Wonderful. Thank you. Good report. Thank you very much.
That takes us to the board chair report. I really don't have, I just have one question, and I don't know if anybody can answer it. I read in the morning paper about the geese that are coming from Sandpoint. Are they coming here to NIC Beach? 300 of them. Wow. So yes, that was a hilarious story, by the way, whoever wrote it, but that's interesting, 300 more. All right. So remarks for the good of the order. I know trustee Vanducci has a K-Tech report.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. We had a board meeting today at K-Tech. Enrollment for the fall is over 400 right now. They've computed their placement rates from the group that's just graduated, and again, they're basically 99% and change. They, and just for clarification, if anybody's wondering, what does that mean? That means at least 99% plus of the graduates have either gone on into the military, are continuing their education, or have found employment, a job in the area that they were studying, their, their, their area of education. So it's, it's pretty impressive, very useful, productive citizens, and that schools help prepare them for that next phase of their life. One other thing, they just had their assessments, or got the results back from the assessments for the CTU side of the world, and the highest in the state went to the folks out at K-Tech. So Colby was very proud of that today, and so that's quite an accomplishment. So it's the model that everybody else is, is looking at, so we'd be very proud and glad that we're partnering with them. Second item I'd like to mention real quick, we're just starting to speak to this. The 75th Annual Association of Community College Trustees will be holding their annual meeting in October in San Francisco. And for at least the first time while I've been on the board, the college has prepared and submitted a presentation proposal that has been accepted, and will be one of the presenting community colleges this fall. It's very exciting. Two of our instructors, Ted Tedman and Casey Wilhelm out of our business department, will be spearheading that presentation. And, and in concert with that, Ted Tedman has also been nominated, Associate Professor Tedman, for Instructor of the Year for the Pacific Division, which is essentially Pacific Region, the West Coast, and, and should he win that award, he'll be automatically entered into the competition for Instructor of the Year nationwide, and we'll find out about that at the same time during the conference. So it could be a very exciting time for NIC, and going to give us a bit of a stage to spotlight some of the good work we're doing here, and, and we're very excited about it. So just wanted to mention that, and we'll get more out on that as we move along.
Well, Todd, I think it's fantastic that, first of all, thanks for your, your work and Lita's work, and everybody on the team that pulled together this presentation, and Ted and Casey, of course. It's going to be great to be at the conference and have NIC doing a presentation. It has been a while. It has, when I first came on the board, there was some presentations then, but not since, so that's great. And then the nomination of one of our own. I, I hope that we all continue to do that going forward, because we have some incredibly talented people on this campus, and we should do our best to recognize them. So thank you for that.
Well, and thank you for thanking folks like Lita. Lita gave me a set, another set of eyes on the presentation and on the submission for the award request, so Lita, thank you. You gave me a couple of sets of looks on those, and there were others involved, so I appreciate it. It was a collaborative effort, so I needed the help.
Any other remarks for the good of the order? All right, we will adjourn. Have a great summer, everyone.